And after that, I'm gonna ask Alderman Betts and people with to lead us in prayers. If I could get roll call. Town of Vidalia Board of Alderman roll call for regular meeting of the mayor and Board of Alderman dated May 11th, 2021. Alderman Betts.
Present.
Alderwoman Denby.
Present.
Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner is noted to be absent at this time. Alderman Probst.
Here.
Alderman Smith. Mayor let the record show a quorum of the boards present and accounted for.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody here. We're gonna start with approving our minutes from a previous meeting. If you've had a chance to review those, can I have a motion to accept those minutes? Motion made by Ms. Denby. Do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, alright. In most municipal meetings, they have a period of public comment before the meeting starts that you can comment on anything on the agenda, and you're welcome to do that. Now, there will be some discussion later on with some of the various groups here that's in the agenda. That doesn't include, that's when they talk now because we will actually, you know, address some different individuals as we go through our, as we go through our agenda. But at this time, does anybody like to make just a public comment on any of our agenda items at this time? Okay, so that being, we'll move on to our first item on our agenda, which is presentation of the financial statement for March. And Ms. Our CPA, Ms. Deborah Moke.
Tonight's financial statements include the balance sheet as of March the 31st, 2021, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the nine months ending March the 31st, 21, a summary budget to actual comparison by fund, and a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. These financial statements have been distributed to all department heads and aldermen for their review. In summary, the town has combined cash in the bank of 7.2 million, including restricted funds of 5.7 million in the hydro fund and 383,000 in the sales tax fund. We have investments of 3.9 million. The hydro reserve fund has 2.4 million, and the general fund has 1.5 million. Total assets are 37.3 million, total liabilities are 8.6 million, and fund balance is 28.7 million. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for the nine months ending March the 31st, 2021 indicates combined revenues of 25.4 million or 68% of the total budget, which is 7% under budget, total expenditures of 25.7 million or 71% of total expenditures. The expenditures are under budget by 4%. Change in net position is a negative $315,000. The negative change in net position is due to the revenues have not caught up with the timing of the expenditures. The negative position is turning around and will continue to move in a positive direction over the next few months with the projected increase in hydro royalties. The increase in royalty percentage and higher production will cause the royalties to increase over the next few months and bring the town back into a positive net position. Personnel expenses are slightly higher than budget due to the retiring of several longtime city employees with built-up accrued leave time. We do not budget for that type leave in our retirement payout, in our budget. Other services and charges are lower than expected even after, even after having paid out expenses for the winter storm. The financial statements also include a capital outlay of 3.1 million of a $5.4 million budget or 55% of the total amount budgeted. It is anticipated not all capital outlay will be spent in this fiscal year due to the change in need and due to the length of time needed to make preparations for the expense, which will result in a carryover to fiscal year 2022. At the end of March, expenditures were at 71% of budget. These financial statements include approximately 375,000 for emergency work and debris removal during and after the winter storm. We have opened a claim with the insurance company and have submitted a request for public assistance through FEMA. The entire process will take months to complete and receive funding on a 25-75% basis. Through May, May the 11th, 3.1 million has been borrowed for the substation construction to cover materials, engineering costs, and legal fees incurred. The aldermen have been notified before the draws are made so that they can be aware of where the money is being spent. All costs are recorded as a capital asset and as a liability on the balance sheet. The appraisals are complete for the right-of-ways and negotiations are pending for the acquisition of the right-of-ways. We have completed the proposed 2021, 2021-22 budget, and it is being presented tonight. The proposed budget will be available to the public tomorrow. A public, a special meeting will be held in two weeks to discuss and vote on the proposed budget. An amended budget will be presented to the board in June before the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, any questions of Ms. Moke? Deborah, thank you. I want to thank you again for the work that you do. I do want to say that in addition to doing all this, that during all this pandemic and stuff, she has, her and her staff have kept the town up to speed on getting everything that we need to turn into FEMA to get reimbursement and all. They have done an outstanding job. In fact, when people call saying they're having meetings on, "We're gonna teach y'all how to do this," we go, "Well, we've already done all that," you know. So it's kinda like, so y'all really have done a fantastic job, and I want to commend you for the job you continue to do, and I really appreciate it. So, thank you very much. Number two, we're gonna have a discussion and vote on approval of these following occupational license. And the first one we have is Life Help Caregiving LLC. Are they here tonight? Okay, would y'all like to stand up and just tell us a little bit about what you're gonna be doing?
Well, I'm Susan. This is Deborah. My sister. We're just grateful and blessed to have a community like this. And others as well. We're gonna be a caregiving agency where a lot of people probably don't want to go to home as long as possible. Like, if they're not in home, you know, it's, 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 anyway, we, we'll be providing, providing care for the vulnerable and something as much stress as we can off of them. We'll be doing background checks and screening and stroke testing and all that to provide the family all of the needed assistance with any of the girl to take care of. So, Deborah, because we've been working, and you're working, and your wife's working, and your mom is at home, and you just need somebody to be there 24/7. We're gonna do 24/7, 7 nights, 7 hours. Or day/night, whatever's needed, we'll provide whatever is needed at all times. And so, we will be reaching out to this community, and we also are involved in other community, but that is, it's a need as well.
I know as us baby boober get older, we're gonna, these can crow.
Right. We have a mom herself who needs help and assistance, so, and we know several people, and, you know, it's just a need that we're aware of, and so we're gonna reach out and help their communities.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Any question from any, any question from any of the aldermen? Do I hear motion? We accept this application?
Make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Probst. Do I hear a second? Mr. Smith, a second. All in favor say aye. Thank y'all. Thank you very much. Okay, the next one we have is Lush Salon Inspire by Ms. Lauren Vines and Heather Powers. Are they here tonight?
Here.
Okay, hi. You want to tell us a little bit about, okay?
I'm Heather Powers. I'm here to represent Lush Salon Inspire. We plan to have massage therapy to barbers, to health psychologists, and facials, all under one group.
Okay. Alright, well, seeing your location's gonna be.
412 Carter Street.
Okay, and that's up, is that the Myers Building?
It's right there by the local.
Huh? Which one?
The Phoenix Building.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. Well, thank you for, you know, for opening a place here in Vidalia. Is any questions? Can I entertain a motion to accept this occupational license?
Mayor, they also had that sign application with this.
Okay, if you will, go and glance at that, and we'll, we'll do both at the same time. Thanks for reminding me of that.
Make a motion. We accept both.
Okay, Mr. Probst made the motion to accept. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion, I think Mr. Betts beat Ms. Denby on that one, so all in favor say aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have Steamy Magnolias, Camethia Ann Hill. Is Camethia here? Hey, Camethia.
Hi. I had to take a teeth mine, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, good evening to the mayor and the city chairman members. My name is Camethia Hill. I'm a resident of Nashville, Mississippi. I've been given the grace to be a proud mother of five children. I'm also a licensed practical nurse. I received my diploma from Louisiana Technical College in Fairview, Louisiana. I'm also an expedition, and I received my certification from Lucas College in Alouine, Louisiana. I am the owner and operator of Steamy Magnolias, which will be offering full-body waxes, facials, electric extensions, vaginal seating, and the menu will seem to grow as I receive more certifications. I have been a nurse for eleven years. I enjoy working with the public and helping to nurse and better help. I've always been in love with beauty and helping people look and feel their best. It's my honor to open my first entrepreneurial venture in the city of Vidalia. Being my great-grandbrother Teresa Plumbins Ford was born and raised on a shop plantation over 95 years ago, who taught me how to pray and instilled how to treat people right and the value of hard work. It's my pleasure to serve the city by doing it and surround cities with their skin and beauty care needs while representing my beautiful state graciously opening its doors.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions? Anybody have? Camethia, did I say you right?
Yes, sir.
Camethia, that's okay, good. Okay, do I hear a motion? We accept the herbal occupational license? Motion made by Mr. Smith. Do I hear a second? Second by Ms. Denby. All in favor say aye. I almost felt like an auctioneer almost. Okay, thank y'all very much. Number three, we have board discussion and vote on adopting a resolution setting the millage being levied on the 2020 tax roll on all properties being subject to taxation by the town of Vidalia. We have Ms. Jeannie Archer here with us today from the clerk's office, and I do want to thank them for the work that they do. So, Jeannie, take it away.
Okay, so I'm Jeannie Archer. I'm the chief deputy at the assessor's office, and every year you have to adopt a millage rate to actually receive funds, you know, to go with your budget. So I'm gonna give you a little bit of information about Vidalia and your millage, and a little bit about how it works. So your current millage is 3.37, and I believe that's the lowest millage rate in the state for a municipality. So you've got a really low millage. There's around 2,350 taxpayers in the city limits of Vidalia, and that does include your businesses, which are also, your personal property, tax money comes from your businesses. With that adoption of the 3.37 mules, if everything is collected based on the current values that we have at this time, the town would receive about $121,263. That is as of the current figures that we have. We also are seeing a rise in the community, so those values could change at any time. When you use the millage and the foreign millage used for computing your taxes, just to give you an idea, if a person has a home that's valued around $200,000, they only pay $67.40 for your city taxes. So it's a really low amount. And with that being said, I'll leave y'all to y'all's adoption.
Any, any questions of Jeannie? And, and, and you know, a lot of, a lot of municipalities use their millage to actually fund their police departments and their fire departments and their general fund. And, you know, just at $121,000, that's a, just a literal drop in the bucket to these budgets that we've got. And so, to have that, and to put it in perspective, a number, like Pineville, for example, a house in Pineville, that $200,000 house you said cost us, it was $67. That same house in Pineville, their, their millage would be $317. So that tells you a little bit, I mean, how low we are, just in, you know, not that Pine was bigger than us, but still, when people, when you compare the cost of living here in Vidalia, we've really got it, really got it good. So I'm asking the council to, let's approve this millage, and can I have a motion to accept that?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Betts. Second by Ms. Denby. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Jeannie. Appreciate that. Okay, the next thing we've got is board discussion and vote on acceptance and awarding a bid to Keystone Electrical Manufacturing Company in the amount of $40,028.43 for three protective relay panels. That's the substation project. There's any questions? If so, I'll entertain a motion to accept that bid.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts. Do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Smith. All in favor say aye. Okay, any opposed? Number five is board discussion and vote on approval of memorandum of understanding and cooperative endeavor agreement between the Red River Delta Law Enforcement Planning Council Incorporated and Town of Vidalia, the Vidalia Police Department. Sheila, Ms. McFarland's here with the police department, and she'll address any questions or tell you a little bit about it if you have any questions.
This is a grant to get called the burn slash jag less than $10,000 grant. Basically, what this is, the federal government, the justice assisted grant, they provide funding for state and local governments. And they give money to the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement, and in return, that's given to Red River Delta and different planning councils. So whenever they do that, the federal government tell Red River Delta and Louisiana Commission, this is how much money that is allocated for each of these government agencies. So we were awarded $11,009, I'm sorry, $1,197 and all. Along with that, the Red River Delta is asking for a memorandum of understanding between the Town of Vidalia slash Vidalia Police Department and its sales. I haven't read the complete understanding on it, but it sounds like talking to Casey from Red River Delta, this is something that they do every time that, that a grant is given from the federal government. Red River Delta will be doing the application for the grant. We have to provide whatever items that we need for the department. We have to provide receipts, credit card, whatever receipts, whatever it is that they, they need.
And one of the things is what Sheila's alluding to is, a lot of these people that give these grants, they have to have approval from the, from the governing body to approve them getting that grant. So this is basically what you're asking for tonight, and so, with that being said, any questions?
Now, you said you had a $10,000 grant, but y'all only got a thousand and something dollars.
We were only allowed, allocated.
Out of the 10,000?
$1,100, yes. That goes along with statistics on crime in the area and the population.
They've got to determine how they determine how much.
That might be a good thing.
Yeah, that is a good thing. If that's how, if that's how it arrived, that's a good thing.
Yeah, if they gave us all the money, that might not be good.
Yeah, we don't want that if that's what it takes, but I just, I just wondered how they arrived at that much.
They have a formula, the, the federal government has a formula that they go by to figure out, you know, how much they give to each of the agencies. And I was told that they, they go by the population, and they have that formula, and they have the statistics from the area.
I'll make a motion. We go.
Motion made by Mr. Probst. Do I hear a second? I think Ms. Denby beat you that time. Ms. Denby got the second. All in favor say aye. Thank you, thank you very much, Sheila. Appreciate that. Okay, number six on our agenda is board discussion and vote on approval of change of employment status for employee of police department, Ms. Angelina Johnson, from a part-time dispatcher, dispatcher to full-time. Any questions? Do I hear a motion? We make that.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Betts made the motion. Do I hear a second? Second by Ms. Denby. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Okay, number seven, board discussion and vote on approval for Town of Vidalia to sell reclaimed asphalt material to Vidalia Cemetery Association for use on the cemetery roads with terms to be set in agreement between parties. The Vidalia Cemetery Association is represented here today, I guess by Mr. Saul. So to give you a little background on that is, you know, we've talked about that, and we looked into it. The attorney general opinion was not gotten, but we determined by talking up to LMA and all the attorneys associated with this, that it is not a legal transaction to do that, to just give that reclaim. You can't do that. In fact, I'll concite you, if you'll pull up on the internet, I think it's either east or west, Feliciano Parish Police Juror was arrested, is serving time for doing that very thing. So I think we want to be very, very careful on that. We do want to see this happen, and the best thing we can do is, is offer at a discounted price, you know, the material. We checked on it, and most of the material, I checked with one or two people who provide it, it goes for anywhere from $40 to $50 a square yard, a square cubic yard for purchase. And talking with a lot of people, because there's various mixes of this asphalt to put a value on it, but we thought that a good fair price, and because it is a community development, and also it's something that's nonprofit, and it benefits the whole community, we can do $30 and, and offer it for that price. I personally would be willing to make a donation to start this, and I feel like, and help any way we can to raise that money to whatever y'all establish, that how much of that reclaim that you need. I think once you establish that, we can come up with a price, and we'll do whatever we can to help you, help you raise the money to get that done. We certainly want to see it happen. I know this year I'd like to see us overlay the street, running down that street. Is that, is that, what's that street name that goes down to Mr. Williams' house, Frank Williams and all? What's that street's name?
Dotson, Riverside.
Is that Dotson? Okay.
Riverside, Dotson.
Yeah, that needs to be, that, that's needs, that's on the list with some others that needs to be resurfaced. And so, maybe that, you know, if y'all can really get a close number on the number of yards that you need and how much of that you need, we'll certainly start working on trying to do something with it to that regard. But first, I have to get council to approve to even do that. So is there any question or discussion?
I, I had a call concerning it and dealing with the Secretary of State. At this point, it was in the reference to the Secretary of State that the Cemetery Association was not in good standing due to reports had not been filled out since 2018. So before we do any business with that, I think we should get in good standing with the Secretary of State, because it's on the website. It's, they, they sent me a copy of it, you know, that it was just due to reports that had not been filled out since 2018. Do y'all know anything about that, people that are here?
We have sent them all new reports that access to.
Well, it's.
Secretary of State also with the, who's down the cemetery board. And I would think they'd access for the, take the deal.
But did, but you need to get that corrected on that website because, or contact him, because on the website, he actually sent me what it stated on, he sent me the, a shot of it. So I would look into that and get within good standing, because it said reports had not been filed since 2018. And I don't know what reports they're talking about. I didn't go into depth of it. It was just what they stated.
I just have a question. Does that, does that prevent them from being able to enter to a contract, or do, I mean?
Well, I think we should deal with people that are in good standing with the Secretary of State.
That's just reporting to the Secretary of State.
Right, but I mean, we should, I think that's what his point was, the person that called me was the fact that, that we need to check it out. And, you know, I mean, it's good for us to do business with people.
Secretary of State's office could be behind and posted.
And if they are, then they need to explain that and correct their website. That's what I'd do.
I got on the phone with Hannah Quinn with the cemetery board today.
Right.
And there's some things that we have discussed and.
Yeah, I mean, just, I mean, I'd get it straight, because that shouldn't be, if it's wrong, y'all shouldn't be put out there as not in good standing with the Secretary of State.
Mr. Saul, if you got a, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, my name is William Saul. Vidalia Cemetery is inside the city limits of Vidalia, have a 911 address. Those roads are in bad shape because of something that the co-engineers did by putting a relief well there. Because we used to be cutting grass, within the last 10, 12 years, since they did that, the roads have been unbearable. We spent some money to bring the roads up, and we got, had we worked there with the police jury on assistance of, then they backed out of the deal. Now, why can't the roads in the cemetery, since it's inside city limits, you put on your grading list, not necessarily blacked out, because they wouldn't hold up? At least put gravel on and get into a cooperative endeavor with the city and the Cemetery Association on maintaining. Y'all do some maintenance, and they'll do some maintenance. I'm there to pray other than Vidalia Cemetery. I'm not, other than that, I'm just trying to help to get the road fixed, because a lot of people in Vidalia are buried there. Before and after the Civil War, there was 15,000 blacks in Concordia Parish. All of them was on this side, on the plantation. This is the biggest slave cemetery that was started up here on this property, which had been donated, given to, and actively being donated for the second time. So we're just asking for assistance. We're not begging, we asking.
Right. I, I don't think, Mr. Saul, on that is still, yeah, you are in the city limits, but it's still considered private property. And, and ethics doesn't distinguish between a political subdivision, an individual, a business. It's strictly anything you do on private property, if it's not something that you, like, we've had this discussion before. If the town goes out there and tears it up, we're gonna fix it. We're gonna do it. If it's on private property and we tear it up, because sometimes we have to access utilities and things. Look, I want to help you. I, I want to do whatever I can to help you, but we still got to do it right, and we, and we want to make sure it gets done right.
What you make this question?
Okay.
I ordered that it was dealt through the police jury, whether it, it wouldn't have bind, holding bind to y'all towards helping a public cemetery, because it's been, public people being buried there, it's not being outrageously, being anything being sold. It's just, you pay your fee for someone opening and closing the grave, that number fee is for maintenance of whatever you've been put there. So if you paying $400, you go over 40 years, they have been paying for 16 cents or less for your maintenance on that $400. But that's, that citizen have paid taxes here. For instance, the wreck, the old wreck, the town installed light boat, town truck, cut grass, town equipment, town men. Likewise, you're doing here also. Now, we all taxpayers. I was, when I was about 11 years old, I went up there to play tennis. Mr. Snapper told me I could not play there. One man stood up. That was Mr. Fred Foster, house wreck behind me. They walk, ain't gonna make him play there if he wants to. But our taxes was have funded that. But we didn't get no assistance in playing the ball up there. Now we're coming to the ground. Our money also helped get those roads paid. I'm not chopping your head. I'm just laying it on the roof, on the lawn. My family been here for 175 years, didn't beg for nothing, 44. What done Mr. Murray's family have got to be what we like to family. We just like for some gravel, not begging, number price, just go down about $15 a ton.
Well, again, I'm putting that there to where it's not, I mean, again, we have looked at it, and everything they've told us, we have to chart. Now, what is that price? I mean, how much can you discount it? You know, we felt like this was, it was a fair price, you know, for the amount that you, what was you talking about, 100? How many, you was talking about 117?
400, it is low, 400 something tons to do that road. We already, the Cemetery Association had worked to give money to install and put gravel on that road. All of that gravel had dissipated because of the condition of the ground underneath due to the relief well and the mistake that the co-engineer was supposed to be scientific, screwed up. Now here's an ordinance from the police jury on their system to cemetery, where they can do add gravel and weed on a public cemetery.
Is that a cooperative endeavor between y'all or not?
They are, they are.
Of course, they are.
Okay.
But it is a public, I'm not, I'm not trying to chew you, because we had this conversation. You just say what you'd like to demonstrate to me. I'm not trying to get nobody in trouble.
But they backed out of giving you gravel? Is that what you're saying, or?
No, they, they want to assist.
They were assist.
But they have to have, like I would tell you before, they would have to have the, if they're the state, that they will to not help responsibly.
Right, right.
And that be done.
Right.
Because it's inside city limits.
Right, and that's where, that's, and I mean, I'm saying this is a possibility. I mean, not saying it can or can't. mean, not saying it can or can't happen, but I mean, we're in cooperative endeavor with the wreck board, right?
Yes.
And that's all the money to turn on.
I understand that, that's police jury, you know?
Whatever money you spend over there, that's all the money to turn.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, we're in cooperative endeavor, which made us able to do that, we had to form a cooperative endeavor to be able to do that.
And likewise.
And that's why I'm saying, we could possibly look into, I don't know if that's legal, if we could legally possibly go into.
Counsel, that, because it is open to the public, is that considered private or public?
I've looked at that.
No, well, that's an option.
That's, that's the question.
I say that that's something we could definitely look into, I mean, and form a cooperative endeavor that possibly could, you know, help in that situation, because he's right, there are people in there that are not, that, y'all don't, y'all have an association where you pay money? Is your money? It's church, which is, but it's not individuals?
No.
It's, it's church.
Only time individuals pay, when they're being buried.
So, basically, it's open.
Right.
So.
And that money is all for late.
It's an option to look into it, now, how much of a cooperative we want to enter into, or if it's even legal, but it'd be worth an opportunity for them to have it, if we took the time to just look into it.
Well, and that, and again, the thing is, we know we can't just give it.
No, we know that.
We can't give it, so, I mean, so that's where we're at, I mean, so, I'll entertain where y'all want to go from here with it, uh, let's say, I think, uh, uh, Ms. Cartwright.
This is what I want to know, have you spoken with anybody in the Attorney General's office and sent us back some information, so when we go to our meeting at the Vidalia Cemetery Association, I will have something in hand to say what has happened, and this is what came from the Attorney General's office.
It did come from the, this came from, uh, the attorneys at the Louisiana Municipal Association emphatically said, you can't, you can't, the donation of giving the gr- asphalt is, is, I know, you can't do that, no matter what, you can't just give it, it's a, it's a considered a donation.
Yes, I, I've been getting calls, calls, calls about the same things, you know, just speaking with you about it, and this is what the constituents want, they want an opinion, Attorney General's opinion, and they wanted me to ask Counsel, if he has pursued an opinion.
No, I haven't. I looked, I looked at Attorney, Attorney General's opinions about it.
I didn't understand you.
When I was researching this in the first place, I looked at a lot of Attorney General's opinions on these kinds of battles, I mean, I didn't answer them.
Was that dealing with the reclaim, basically? Okay, but I'm talking about what he was talking about, a cooperative endeavor, that we could come into, to maybe some assistance, assistance, just like the police jury was going to do that, as a public entity in our city limits.
What is, what does that assistance look like?
Well, that's something we had to determine, what we could work together to do, as, that's what a cooperative endeavor is.
Right.
What part you want, what part do I want, that's the same thing that's happening right over here.
Yeah.
Exactly the same thing, now, our part in that is huge, and I'm not going to get into that, because I done dealt with that before, our part is huge, and you, everybody knows that, but we put forth that effort to make it huge, so, if he's asking for that, in that community down there, then we should have an opportunity to give him that, look into, an Attorney General's opinion, number one, and get it. Number two, see what we could do to work together as a cooperative endeavor, form one, if it's possible, to see what we can do to help them, in our city limits, because it is in our city limits.
And some of that. And I'm all for that.
Some of that money y'all be getting, that money, hydro money, whatever, it need focusing trickle down there until, not trickle, I'm seeing a little small stream coming to the black community, because we need some assistance also, we need housing, your brain job, but they, they can't handle jobs, that's why I, look, I, I called five, hey, man, I need some help at the house, I'm paying ten dollars a mile, I can't get no help, or man, I can't work with it, fifteen.
Well, that's, that's the life as it is today, because nobody wants to work, basically, in my opinion.
I have something to say about the cemetery, when I was on the jury, I, I had them to stick the road in the backside of cemetery, I was looking at, in our chat, I didn't, only go to the cemetery association. I, I was with you, I asked them to send another, leave some of that to the jury, ask them to assist them to make the road in the back of cemetery, so it can totally divide it from the front of the road all the way to the back, see, they did that, and they found out that this, this city, that, that was the city not in the past.
That's in the city.
That road we put in the back.
Ain't shouldn't have done that.
By the jury, not the city, and we called Randy Temple on the jury there, on the, uh, jury there during that time, and he the one had, it was in his district, okay, now, Baltimore, Attorney General said, you all stopped here, all of y'all voted on that, to send us, to get opinion from the Attorney General.
And that?
Oh, let me finish now, get a, a, a opinion from the Attorney General, then he turned around, also voted, the, you all didn't find out from the Attorney General, what they had to get out of, to the Cemetery Association, y'all actually, Counsel, Mr. Murray right there, they're looking to that, he just said that he ain't never did, he just called around, that ain't what you do, Bill. How you do, Bill, you do it this way, you was.
What I said was.
You voted on an opinion, let me finish what I gotta say, you can talk.
I would like to say.
You voted on an opinion, Baltimore, wait a minute, you voted on an opinion, you passed it, all scored, all, all, everybody voted, you just, you just vote, everybody voted for it, that's what we weighed on, okay? But we just, if you don't want your Attorney General for opinion, then you, okay?
Okay.
Now, y'all been pretty sure, take the letter out, we ain't voting on, y'all won't remember that?
That's what me, that's what me, and I.
Y'all remember that?
I, no, I remember, really, I remember it completely, really, I remember it completely, but let, let me back up and explain.
Okay.
Okay, with this, with Attorney General opinion, the only Attorney General opinions I have asked for, it took me almost six to seven months to get, y'all were wanting something quicker than that.
No, no, no.
And we, we, we went and looked and tried to get an answer, and it was emphatic, that you cannot give the asphalt, that's where we're at, we can't, so, let's work from here, we can talk about, we should have got an Attorney, we can do it now, but it's going to be seven months before you hear something, it's going to be six or seven months before you get an actual response from it. Huh?
I'm the jury, let me be honest with you, long as this board voted completely the Attorney General for opinion, but not like that, okay, I, we did that so many times.
Okay.
It'd be, it'd be the ultimate, could have called down and said, look, we sent down for opinion from you all, we are good, what's the stat on that, they would have told me, somebody got all the toll, that's about the, the way I.
Okay.
That, that's where I've been conspiring, I held it during my time serving in the jury.
Okay, well, if we request that, we won't take any action until we get that back, and we know what it's going to say, what does the counsel want to do?
I say get the opinion, as we said we would do, and if it takes seven months, it takes seven months, and if it takes two weeks, but we need to follow up on that consistently and try to get the, get it done, as a city, as offices, you know, people in the office follow up on it, I mean, every month, squeaky wheel gets grease, as they say, call them up, where's it at, we need some help, we need some help, they get tired of hearing you, they might do something, but, we need to do what we say we're going to do, then I still say, we need to look into the cooperative endeavor possibilities with, with them, and see what we can work out possibly, maybe nothing, but at least we can look into, if it's legal to do that.
All right, is that how the counsel feels?
I call for a vote on it.
Okay, all right, what, make, make the motion.
Make a motion, we vote on thee, no, we don't vote it on Attorney General's opinion, so, on a motion that we look into the possibility of a, a cooperative endeavor, working with the Cemetery Association at the city cemetery, basically, in the city limits, and see what we can work out to possibly give them assistance.
Um, I, I had a question, how, how is the cemetery?
How many cemetery though?
It's old. I mean, I would, I would think something like that, there ought to be some, it's just going to make some, some grant money, or historic money, or something, I, I don't, but it seem like something you want people around.
Well, that would be something the association could look into, I mean, they could look into grants, possibly, I mean, that's what I would, if y'all, have, have y'all ever tried to get any grants for assistance? That's the problem, yeah.
And they still, I mean, if he want to go right now.
Right, right.
The Attorney, Philip Latard's trying to get signatures, that's what he's been looking for, that's where we are right now with that.
All right.
I can report that as a handle, Mr. Attorney.
That, that does raise a.
If you still waiting on signatures before the Cemetery Board can come in for the, y'all only, and then they can write.
Well, that, wait a minute, because that, that, that brings up another, I mean, so, the property's still in the Murray estate?
Yes.
Yes, they're in the process of doing that.
Do y'all have any kind of formal lease agreement, or ownership?
Do y'all have a lease with them? I mean, that's what I was wondering, do y'all have a lease?
It's in the process, it's in the process, this is the second time that donation been made.
Okay, so, y'all did have it donated at one time?
Yeah.
And now, you've lost your donation, so you?
No, we haven't lost it, it is based, it has to be given to a cooperative endeavor.
Okay.
Someone that is, that, that Attorney General.
That family have been very gracious to that Cemetery Association.
I, I agree, but let's, let's address this thing I got right here, with, with counsel, in your opinion, can you get a cooperative endeavor agreement with somebody on a property that they don't own? You see what I'm saying? Huh?
They've got the use of it, by verbal agreement.
Right.
It has been years, and years, and years.
Okay.
Family's always been ready to donate, but never got taken.
I know, but technically, I don't want to get caught in one of these things, because those people who are looking and seeing that y'all hadn't filed, or something ain't, ain't in compliance, these people are looking with.
Well, I go back to say what my motion was, I'm gonna make my motion again, it was to look into the possibility of making a cooperative endeavor between them, just like we want the Attorney General's opinion, we'll see what the Attorney General's opinion is, if we have to get an Attorney General's opinion on the same thing of whether we can enter into a cooperative endeavor with them, then we need to do it at the same time, send them both off, but, that's my motion, so I say, let's vote.
I'm trying to say, I mean, I, I don't remember voting on Attorney General, that's my main.
Huh?
The first, Attorney General's opinion, that you say that the board voted to do was to do what?
Was to get an Attorney General's opinion on the asphalt. Now, that, that's a, that, go back.
We can write down and say, we want an opinion on asphalt.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't like that, I don't, I don't have it in my head exactly how we stated it, but we can go back and look at the minutes and see what it said, but.
I, I think that, I think, in all honesty, that vote was, if it's illegal, that we would do it, it wasn't, it wasn't that the counsel directed us to get.
But we still haven't done that, we still haven't done that, we don't know whether it's legal or not.
Well, we've been.
We just have our opinion through other opinions, whether it's legal or not, so, that's all we're, they're asking for, is to get an opinion, and it, it's what we should do, I mean, we said we were going to do that.
Go ahead.
When it started, the mayor asked me to look into whether or not the town could legally donate that to be, I looked into that, I talked with the LMA, I looked at prior Attorney General's opinion, I put a lot of time into it, and in my opinion, that you can't just donate, I truly believe that if that's what you're going to ask the Attorney General, he's going to tell you, no, the town just can't donate.
Okay, that, I mean, if they satisfied with that, that's fine, but if they want the Attorney General's opinion, we said we could get it, and.
I want to clarify on what I did.
Again, and that's the reason why, why wait on an Attorney, when you got a, here's a man who's been sitting as a judge for forty years, an attorney, been here forever, tells us it's not, and we have legal, the head counsel for LMA says you can't do it, I didn't want to put y'all off set, that's why we got it back on the agenda, trying to find some way to make this happen, we want this to happen, y'all, we're not trying to do that, we're not trying not to do it, we're trying to do it, but we've got to do it legal and make sure that we do it right, please understand that.
We understand what you're saying, Mayor.
And, and if y'all want the Attorney Gen-, we'll get the Attorney General opinion, see.
If you all, if you all would have sent down, when we, y'all voted on that Attorney General opinion, and asked for that Attorney General opinion, you all would have had an answer by now, it wouldn't have took no forever, you sent down for opinion on, all that business, y'all got it, so you took a long one to get that, but if you sent down for that opinion, like they asked you to, when y'all voted on it, you would have had an answer by now, and also, another thing I tell you, the police jury, the, the people they showing, they showing, they have a right, they were, they were doing, they thought the cemetery was in the past, because they thought the, the city, uh, district stopped right there where, like I said, Mr. Williams, they're going down that road, and that, that's why they got that whole road in that car, they came in and assisted to put the road in the back, they also assisted, they gave the gravel, and the law book that they had, police jury had, they better know that, what they can do, what they can't do, they either had a choice, if that cemetery was in the past, they had to get a piece of sense, sell that, or find the money, some other way to make sure y'all maintain it, upkeep the road in that cemetery, I keep seeing the difference in the past, and then the difference in the city, it's right here on the page, the same page we showing you.
Okay.
That's what I'm at.
Okay.
They were doing good, and I'm going to get it on you, and I think you're just one to have, for all we from the act, why did they send down and get the opinion like they asked you, and you all voted on it, right?
It was, I've done explained, Willie, please, I underst-, I explained why the board counsel didn't direct us to get an Attorney, they said if it's legal, that they approve, yeah, that's exactly what we approved, now, I, I will go back and pull it, but I don't, look, let's move on, let's move, let's move on, but, I mean, if y'all want to get that, I'll wait till we get that, if y'all want to wait, and whatever it is, then we'll, we'll call it again, call a meeting, however long it takes, we'll do that, and so, uh, Mr. Probst does have a motion on the floor, and if he, I mean, I would like for you to.
The other thing, if you want to do the Attorney General's opinion, whether it's legal or not, and you just said, you trying to determine a fair market value, or where we need to be, if I was going to do the Attorney General's opinion, I'd say, at what point, at, how much, if we can't give it to them, then to what extent can we discount it? To what extent can we sell it to them the cheapest, and still be legal, and that would all be involved, they could say, we could drive it to twenty percent, they may say we can sell it for, for less, I don't know, or they may say, no, you got to sell it fair market value, but that would clear all the guesswork and decisions that we're making to see whether it's legal or not legal. I mean, that's, that should be included in that Attorney General's opinion, and that way we know everything's above board, everything's good, and, uh, that's their opinion.
I agree.
All right. So, in that motion, I'd like to have it where that's included.
I'd like to also state, it is a public cemetery, and Murray's family have been very, very great and gracious to the Cemetery Association, because at any time, they could have told us, stop burying. It, it's not a segregation, because we have a lady that was buried there several years ago, she was a white female, and she had a lovely service there, but don't nobody want to see their loved one in water, and I put that back, that's Co-Engineer's problem, I had a lady call me from Texas, I want to pick my mother up and move, and you can't do that, and you got to go to Cemetery Association, you got to go to the church, get a, I mean, uh, exhumed, then you got to go back and redo the whole thing all over again.
Okay.
But they found it been very gracious, I'm not going to take, I'm not going to let everybody take that from me.
Okay, motion made by Alden Probst, does everybody understand it? Counsel and Jay, did y'all get the motion?
Uh, not quite, do we have a second yet?
I second it.
Okay, second by Ms. Dembie.
So, basically.
Do you want to repeat that?
Well, I think what Alden Probst said, where he wanted to s- uh, seek the possibility of a cooperative endeavor agreement between the town of Vidalia and the Cemetery Association for assistance in maintaining the cemetery, and to seek an AG opinion on the legality of town, of the town donating or selling the reclaimed material to the association.
At what, at, at what, if not, if not given, at what pers-, at what point do you discount it, if you can even discount it, basically?
You did hear him say maintaining.
No, I didn't say maintaining, I didn't say maintaining, I didn't say maintaining.
Okay.
I said, I don't even, I said, I wanted a, I wanted a cooperative endeavor to be looked into.
Right, for, between the town and cemetery.
To determine where we could reach a medium, if we can do it, between the two, two people, to the two entities, and that would be a, that's not going to happen tomorrow, that's something we need, we'd have to try to work out, just like we did right over here with the police jury, and how much did we take, how much did they take?
What would, so, what the agreement would be between the town and the cemetery for?
I, and all I said was look into it, I didn't say.
But, but I mean, what would the agreement be for?
It'd be, it'd be just the roads, you know, the mains, the roads.
Maintaining the roads?
Roads, right, assisting, if we can do it. Roads, right. Assisting, if we can do it.
Assisting in.
But I would still think that, that their legal work is gonna be back sometime soon, hopefully, right?
But what she, what he's saying, he wanted you all to send an opinion down, that's what the attorney general request. What assisting you all can do with help of the road, uh, donate, uh, reclaim that you all got off the street. They wanna know, can't you, uh, can the city assist us to ma- maintain the road? But no, we couldn't do it. They might have to put it through a river, we don't have it. You understand that?
Yeah, I, I think, I think what Jay's asking.
Well, a cooperative endeavor agreement's gotta have, you know, you're agreeing to.
But see, we're not.
Well, it's part of his motion.
Really, the cooperative endeavor is something I said we need to look into.
But that's part of your motion.
No, it doesn't even have to be a part of the motion, not what it's gonna be, it's a motion to make sure we look into it. My motion is, we look into a cooperative endeavor possibility with them, association. That's all that motion consists of. I don't want it to go away. I don't want it to go away. I want us to look into it and determine what we can do.
So basically, what motion are you asking for? I mean, 'cause I'm hearing.
Okay, let me make it plain, one more time. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna make the motion one more time. I want a motion, let me do it, John, let me make the motion one more time, because I done had enough of this mess. I want a motion that says, we need to determine what we can sell it to them for, and if we can. And if we can't sell it to, I mean, if we, we can't give it to them, what we can give it to them for, for nothing, or can we determine how much we can discount that, if we can give it to them? That's a pretty simple motion. That's what you need to find out from the attorney general. That's my motion. Now, is that understood? So, the other part of that is, not even included in that, 'cause I'm gonna do another motion, separate from that.
So this motion.
So we can make it simple.
This motion offered by Alderman Probst and seconded by Alderman Demby, is to seek an attorney general opinion on the legality of the town donating or selling at some price level, the, ask the town's reclaimed material.
Correct. Legally, legally. That, what, we legally can sell it or give it to them. Huh? For a public cemetery, right?
To the cemetery association.
All right, and the other motion is this.
Well, let's, well, can we go ahead and vote on this one first?
We can vote on this one, okay, we'll do this separate.
All right, motion made, second by Ms. Demby, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Second one is this, my opinion is the, that we continue to look into a possibility of a cooperative endeavor between City of Adey and Association. That motion is to continue on, to not let it go away, that we continue to research what we can do. Now, if that's an attorney general's opinion, then put it in another opinion to the attorney general.
I would think that that would be a part of the first one, if you do that, you could have put, do this and help maintain it. Instead, but it's still.
But it, but it's still a, it's still a cooperative endeavor, which I want it separate.
Okay. Mr. Probst made a second motion to get us to continue our efforts to seek what level of help we can give them, assistance afterwards, is that correct?
If possible.
If possible.
Have a second?
Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Demby, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's move on. All right, number eight is board discussion vote on acceptance of engagement letter for Silas Simmons, LLP, to provide audit services for the town of Adey for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Any questions on this? This is our, our annual approval.
I'm making a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Betts, right here, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Probst, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, now, these next two, out of, we're introducing in ordinance, there's no action to be taken, this is just the introduction. Uh, more advertising will be done in our legal journal, and also, we will have a, 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 uh, they will be discussed at our next meeting. The first one, item number nine is introduction of an ordinance adopting the operating budget of revenues and expenses for the town of Adey, Louisiana, for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. There's, there's no action need to be taken, it's just the introduction. And then, number ten is the introduction of an ordinance approving the mayor appointment of Pierre Wilson as the municipal clerk, effective July one, two thousand twenty-one, and fixing her salary. That's the other introduction, and that takes us to item number eleven. Uh, board discussion and vote on approval of funding for the two thousand twenty-one summer youth program, the Great Mounter, uh, Great Mount Carmel Missionary Baptist Church, Pastor Raymond Riley, uh, asking for four thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars. Is Pastor Riley here?
He, uh, had a school board meeting, he called me at the last moment, and said that he had a school board meeting, uh, at this time, and he had intended to be here, and he will be here. He asked if you could move that down to the last thing before adjournment, and by that time, possibly, he would be here for discussion.
Oh, I, I have no problem with that, if counsel was okay with that, do they want to move it?
I would like to just, you know, we went through this last year, uh, I mean, y'all two weren't on the board, but, uh, John and I were, and we found out, we approved it, you know, I mean, with no, we had some major discussions at first, but then we, we understood each other a little better, and it was approved, and, uh, but we could, I don't have a problem in moving it down if you want to wait for it, but what do, what do y'all, what do the rest of y'all want to do?
He just asked me to have to vote, so I brought his request.
I don't have a problem moving it down.
Okay, let's just move it, he gets here, then we will.
We'll move that down, however, if it gets to the end of the meeting, and truck, four dumpsters, old treat, street signs and posts, frames and assemblies for six mowers, we did, and we did our assemblies. Uh, and so, we've got, I think, just one bid.
One bid on that one.
One bid on this one, so, uh, this man is gonna have some stuff to come get. Uh, and his bid is for uh, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents.
What's the, Buzz, what's the name on, what's the name on that?
The name is J.J. Merchant, Accelerated Marketing and Auctions, and this is, uh, that's just, that's, that's the name, James Durham. So, I hear motion by counsel to accept this bid, or they want to take it to Pac-Man?
Yeah, take it.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Betts to accept the bid, do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Probst, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right, next one, we have a nineteen ninety-seven Ford truck, and we have one bid on it. Uh, we might get in it tonight, I don't know.
Might.
I'm scared. And it's, it's by Mr. Durham. Uh, that's the first time I've ever run across that much electrical tape on a motor. And he bids one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. Do I hear motion, we accept this bid?
Accept it.
Motion made by Mr. Betts, I know, I hear second. Mr. Smith, all, uh, seconded that, uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
I just want to ask, where did the twenty-seven cents go?
Matching number.
Okay, all right, behave. All right, here we go. Number three is nineteen ninety-four Chevy truck, we have one bid, with no electrical tape on it. It's from Mr. Durham again. He bid one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. So, do I hear motion, we accept this bid? Motion made by Mr. Betts, right here, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Probst, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, all right, uh. The next thing we have is a nineteen ninety-three GMC truck.
I think you've got three of them on that one, Buzz.
There's three bids on this one, okay. The first one is from Kevin Davis. And his bid is for three hundred and fifty-five dollars. Bid by Mr. Durham, we're gonna see. Anybody want to guess? No, one thirty-seven, thirty-seven, one hundred thirty-seven.
He missed that one, he missed that one.
Okay, now, the fourth bid, I mean, third bid is from, uh, now Jay, it's written in red, a Cushman golf cart.
That's, it's in there with it, that's, he's got two bids in there, you have to come back to that one.
Okay, so he's got, both his bids in one envelope, I am not gonna read the golf cart, I'm just gonna try to pull that, well, I guess that's the one.
Exactly.
Okay. I will go ahead and tell you that his, uh, this is Ronald Renfro. For the vehicle, he's voting for one, I mean, bidding one fifty-seven even, so. And I'm gonna leave out, 'cause he, he has bid on a.
Golf cart's coming down the list.
And I'm gonna leave that, y'all see that, he's got a bid on that, so, well, we'll address that. Next, we have a nineteen ninety-six.
Buzz got a war that bid.
Make a motion and take Kevin Davis' bid.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm motion, uh, to accept that bid. I hear motion, motion by Mr. Probst, I hear second.
Second.
Mr. Smith, second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Now, the next thing we've got is a nineteen ninety-eight International Dump Truck, and we have two bids on it. Mr. Durham has been very active in the bidding process. I hope he brings a lot of equipment to move, though. And his bid on this was five hundred seventy-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. And the second bid on the dump truck is by Rex Archer, four hundred and ten dollars. We're getting there, y'all. Now, we had two.
Buzz, you got a.
Make a motion, we accept.
Do I hear motion to accept that bid, I'm so sorry.
I motion.
Motion made by Ms. Demby, here, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Betts, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, I'll try to do better on remembering the vote. Two thousand four Dodge truck, we have one bid.
Two thousand Dodge truck, I believe.
It's a two thousand, what did I say? It's a two thousand Dodge truck, and Mr. Mr. Durham bids one hundred and seventeen dollars and seventeen cents. So, do I hear motion that we accept this bid?
Accept it.
Motion made by Mr. Betts, I hear second.
Second.
Second made by Mr. Probst, all in favor say aye? Okay. Next, we have a two thousand four Ford truck, Mr. Durham. One hundred seventy-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents, do I hear motion, we accept that bid?
Make a.
Okay. Motion made by, by Ms. Demby, a second by Mr. Probst, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
We have a two thousand six Ford van. Mr. Durham. Yeah, I'm trying to get through this best. One fifty-seven, fifty-seven. Do I hear motion, we accept that bid?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Probst, here, second. Second by Mr. Smith, all in favor say aye? All right, we've got two, this is a two thousand eleven John Deere Z nine thirty A zero turn more with a sixty-inch molding deck, and Mr. Durham is bidding one thousand seventy-nine dollars. And the second bid I have is Mr. Rex Archer. He bid two, two hundred and twenty dollars. Okay, hear motion, we accept that bid?
Make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Probst, I hear second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Betts, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, now, we have a two thousand five and two thousand three Ford Crown Victoria, is that correct? These are both going for the, in one?
No, no, that's, that, they're separate bids, they've got two bids in that one envelope for each one.
Oh, okay, okay, I got you.
Yep. There's two bids, mayor, on the two thousand and five Ford Crown Victoria.
Okay.
So you should, you'll have two bids on each of those Crown Vics.
Two bids each on each Crown Vic, okay, I got you, I see what you're saying, yeah. All right, well, the first one looks like it's, uh, well, this is in one envelope, two, be, a bid on the two thousand five and the two thousand three.
That's right.
And this is gonna be from, uh, Tom Bryant, with, uh, Express Recycling. Y'all do know this would, these would have went for a lot more if you just took them to the scrapyard, don't you? Just for information. Okay, he's bidding, okay, on the Crown Vic, two thousand five, he's got three hundred dollars. On the two thousand three Crown Vic, he's got three hundred dollars. That's Mr. Bryant. Okay, Mr. Durham, on the, this is gonna be on the two thousand five Crown Vic. He's bidding one thirty-nine, thirty-nine. So, and on the two thousand three Crown Vic, he's bidding one twenty-seven, twenty-seven. He must have a lucky number, that one. And for the two thousand three, by Kevin Davis, he has bid one hundred seventy-five dollars. And we're, only got one or two more, y'all, and that's gonna be it.
So, now, we need, mayor, we need a motion.
Oh, can I have a motion to accept that bid?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Probst.
You want to do the oh-five first?
Mayor, make a motion, oh-five.
Okay, do I hear motion for the two thousand five, accept that bid, three hundred dollars? Motion by Mr. Probst, I hear second. Mr. Smith, second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, hear motion on two thousand three Ford Crown Vic? Mr. Smith made the motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Demby, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, now, we have a two thousand and six thirty-one foot Dutchman camper, and we have one bid. Seven hundred ninety-seven dollars by Mr. Durham, seven, seven hundred ninety-seven, ninety-seven. Do I hear motion, we accept that bid?
Accept it.
Okay, that was by, who made that?
Me.
John, Mr. Betts made the motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Miss, second by Ms. Demby, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Y'all will be glad to know this is the last one, and this for a Cushman golf cart, we have two bids. Uh, the first one is going to be Rex Archer for fifty dollars. And then we have Mr. Durham. He has bid two hundred twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
Would that golf cart include in that other one over here, at the first?
Oh, oh, that says a four by four Intellitrack, is that it? Is that the golf cart?
Yes, Cushman golf cart.
Yeah. He's got fifty-seven dollars, so.
So he, so that one got two twenty-seven?
Yeah.
How much was this?
So two twenty-seven, twenty-seven is what he had on, yeah. Okay. Hear motion, we accept that?
Make a motion. Do we accept?
Motion made, second by Ms. Demby, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on. All right. The next thing we have is, uh, board discussion on town policy charging commercial utility rates on home-based businesses, businesses Alderman Betts has requested this be on the, uh, agenda. Uh, Mr. Mr. Betts, you want to open up the discussion?
Yeah, well, it's been, it's been the policy that someone had a home-based business that we changed their utilities, uh, to a commercial rate. And then, I really don't know why, other than by ordinance, we're not supposed to have any residential ba, businesses anyway, so I don't know if they just did that to make a trade or not. But, the, uh, and the, the ladies are here, here tonight, that, that is a good example. They basically are gonna use their house as an office. Well, uh, I really don't think it's, with the world going the way it is, with the internet, and you're doing a lot of, uh, businesses that way, I, I really don't, don't think that, uh, it would, it's. it would, it's a good idea to raise their commercial, to commercial rates. I have, uh, when they come to the office and they then, um, tell them that this is the thing. We also make suggestions that they contact, uh, the tech center. That'd be a place where they can house their business for X amount of dollars, uh, a month. And it's a lot cheaper there than paying commercial rates for utilities that we have in service. So I, I would, I would like to see us, uh, readdress that, that policy of, of changing someone's from a residential to a commercial rate when all they're doing is an office. Um, I had another man that was in my office that was just totally irate that we would do this. He wanted to call me everything but my mother's son, uh, saying small-town politics and all this kind of stuff like that. Well, I'm a big boy, I can take that. But, um, I really do think it's something that we need to consider of changing that policy where we, we do not charge, especially if someone is just using their one room as an office, a desk, or something like that to, to, to have a business. And I would like to see us change that policy.
I, I think, John, if you're gonna do that, also address the sanitation. I mean,
Yes.
you know. Look, this is, this is way it was when I got here, as far as, I don't know what the reason was for why the home-based businesses were that way. And same thing with the, with the trash collection. Most people that have home-based businesses, they don't put in an absorbent. Now, if you got a contractor who thinks that he can bring his contractor trash home and pile it up in the ditch, that's happened before. I mean, and, you know, that's when you need to go up and start charging rates, but we're not supposed to pick up contractor trash, we all know that. But I, I am certainly open, but whatever we're gonna do, we're gonna be consistent. If we charge one, we wanna make sure we get all those businesses identified, so it's fair. I'm not gonna just do one and just say, well, you gotta come in and ask for it, cause if we do, we gotta scour all those accounts and find out who they are, correct them and make those adjustments. It's whatever the council wants to do, I'm all for that. I mean, but it's for whatever y'all wanna do.
But as far as you said, that due to ordinance is really those, really, we're gonna have to look at the ordinance in a sense because.
Well, and that's another thing that we need to, we need to address in, in rewriting the ordinance, because.
Because of the businesses in the home.
Home-based businesses are.
That's the thing.
I believe they are outlined by ordinance. Uh, and that's one of the reasons why we, uh, have zoning in the city.
Right.
We have business zones and we have residential zones. And, um, if, if we're going to, to do that, then we would have to look at that ordinance too of
Right.
allowing a office-type business within a home.
Right. But you made a good statement when you said the way of the world, and there's many, many, many more people today than we even think about working out of their home.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say. There's no telling how many.
No telling how many people actually are working out of their home.
Well, you know, it's, it's, it's not politics, you know, this is the ordinance that we've been living by.
It's what we've been going by. So, I mean, that's, I agree with you. I agree with John one hundred percent. But we need to look at the ordinance and we need to look at it in a way that everybody, like you said, everybody's the same, you know?
Right.
No matter who they are. Now, you got some have beauty shops for years in their home, you know? For years, that's how, a lot of them did them. They didn't have a place, they had a place in the back of their house.
Yeah.
And they still have some today. But, uh.
We, I guess, without looking at what the ordinance is actually explicitly saying,
Right.
I think, I think it's on the, the conversations out there that y'all do want to, if that's what y'all wanna do, it's changed, y'all, we'll have to make an ordinance change, basically. And that's, that's what y'all do, I mean, so.
So.
Y'all are in agreement to do that, that's, that's the main thing.
I guess it'd be John, cause he brought it up, but make a motion to some kind of, look into the.
Until we can identify it, I'd like for, if there's really not a mo, other than, we'll go ahead and do that.
Yeah.
And look at it and.
Look at it and see how we, how we would, are, now, who's working on those? Some, are y'all?
We, we've got it, we.
Y'all working on them?
Well, we haven't had a meeting yet, but we, I know the sign com, uh, working, but we're kinda going through.
We're working on signs, y'all working on.
Well, what I'm kinda doing is going through and making a list of some things, you know, going ahead and going right to those easy ones.
Right.
You know?
Right.
Uh, that's kind of really outdated, so.
So that's something we can look at in the ordinance, and, uh, I think it would be a problem to change.
But we'll, we'll have that one brought up. Uh, Jay just made to know that we'll, we'll make sure we have the answer to that one at the next meeting to discuss that, for sure.
Alright.
Okay, uh, next thing we've got is, uh, discussion on the possibility of leasing the property currently being used as a town debris yard. Uh, Mike left, he must've had a meeting.
No, you're.
Oh, you hit back there, okay. Uh, alright, let me, let me, uh, set the table for this discussion. Out there where our debris yard is, it's down, uh, you go down, go past the old Blaney's, and our debris yard is back there behind our sewer lagoons, and it's a big ol' huge field. And that's where we put all this debris from the, uh, from the ice storm. And it is a mountain of it back there. Uh, to dispose of it, you're supposed to have an incinerator that DEQ approves of. It's an, it's an apparatus where you dig this big pit, and it's basically got a blower that basically keeps the, the smoke and all that stuff. And you, that's how you can dispose of it without hauling it somewhere to a landfill. So that's the way you dispose of it. Uh, Mike had come to requesting so, uh, some other city property to, you know, to put up electric fences and put cows on. Of course, y'all know Mike is in the, the construction business, and he called, and basically the, the places that he wanted were not zoned agricultural, and so we couldn't do anything there. But he's wanting to, that area that is, uh, where that shipyard is, is basically a green area. He does want to put electric fence up there for a, and, and put cows on it, and for his payment, he said he would incinerate and get rid of all that, that, uh, debris. Now, I asked Mike to maybe get up, if he would've just given me a bid on how much that debris removal and incinerating would've cost. I don't know if he has it, because it's hard to judge how much is out there. Yes, I like.
When, when all that first started with the, with the debris coming in, I had some conversations with, uh, city employees about, uh, doing the same thing that you just talked about, digging a pit, bringing it, all the curtain blower, bringing it in and burning it as it was coming in. At that time, I told them, with a track, I have to feed it and maintain, uh, the curtain blower fuel, track oil fuel, low-fund operated, um, it would be two hundred dollars an hour. And again, it's, it's hard to determine how many hours it's gonna take to burn it. And I've kinda come up with a rough, rough number. It's gonna take probably roughly a week and a half, two weeks to burn all that debris. And you're looking at a cost of somewhere based on the two hundred dollar an hour rate, twelve to fifteen thousand dollars just to get rid of that. In the other conversation that I spoke with the mayor was that, I'm gonna take care of that and get it gone. There's some other old, uh, material off to the back, up where that ditch line is at. I'm gonna burn that, get rid of it. And then kinda clean the property up, work on some drainage on it, um, so that, you know, not a lot of standing water here and there. And also, any other materials that build up over a course of time, I'll take care of those as well. I'll burn it out. All that would be in lieu of payment for this lease. What I'd be asking for would be a five-year lease, and at the end of that five-year, a five-year option for an, an option for another five years. There'll be some barbed wire replaced or tended to. A lot of that's already got barbed wire around the, around the lagoon and so on and so forth, so just kinda tidy that up, check it. Um, there would, the gate coming in, um, do some work on it. And then there would be areas that there would be hot wire coming. The only question is, is, uh, I'm just trying to find out exactly how much land that the town owns back there to be utilized. So, I guess we'd have to find out.
And it, just for clarity, you're saying that the town still had, reserves, reserves complete access to, if we have.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the town would be able to come in and out. The only thing that I would add is that the gate, you know, be closed, so that the cows could get out. Every time they come in, just make sure they close the gate. Or possibility of installing a cattle yard. I can have one of those. I might have one laying, to be honest with you, from a core job that I did. I'd have to look. But, uh, we could install that there and then, I would kinda solve that problem.
So what we're talking about is possibly using it for him having it, us using it, if we have a situation similar to what we had before? Would you have, you were saying we would still have an opportunity to use it like we did before?
Yeah, he's, and he's saying he would still.
Still, you would take care of it?
Yes.
And all you're gonna do is put cows on it?
All I wanna do is put cows.
We'll keep, well, and plus, you, we gotta keep it mowed and stuff. But here, here's, but again, like we did when we talked about cemetery, I do want to look at the legality of it.
Right.
And, and all that. And I think that we will e- explore that. And, and based on that, if we, is something that's legal that we can do, what does the council wanna do?
I think that's a win-win for us, because you take.
Also, I want y'all to understand, it'd be, it'd be an agreement. I'd have drawn a, naturally, you know, the town council, I mean, the town attorney can, uh, you know, look over that. Also, I'd be supplying you with, um, um, insurance.
Yeah, that's my, that was my next question.
Yeah, all that'd be done.
Okay. Okay.
Say, that's a bunch of money, in a sense, if we come up with a situation like we had before.
Any other questions?
And it's not gonna be, I don't want people to get this, it ain't gonna be like I was kidding with Buzz earlier, or the mayor earlier. It's not gonna be a Yellowstone, it's just gonna be, you know, twenty, thirty head cow, I can see it one time, that, you know. And a lot of it depends on just exactly how much property is out there, cause you
Right.
You can only put so many cows on a certain amount of acres.
Alright, any question, any more questions? Alright, pending, uh, I hear a motion pending, uh, we get approvals of legality of it. Uh, y'all wanna make that, who, somebody wanna make that motion? Motion made by Mr. Smith, I hear, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Probst, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post?
Thank y'all, board.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, number fourteen, I'm happy to introduce to y'all Mr. Bo Pilgrim and Brian Chandler with Reed Insurance. Uh, I'm gonna let Mr. Bo, uh, introduce and do the honors here.
Yeah, we're, uh, we're Reed Insurance, this is Brian Chandler, Bo Pilgrim, and, uh, we represent the town of Vidalia for their insurance needs. It's been a great ple, uh, pleasure to represent the town. Uh, the mayor, uh, the board, uh, has brought the insurance program back to Vidalia, to, uh, to agents here, and it's been a blessing to us, um, because we've been able to actually hire additional staff and, uh, spend those dollars here. And it's really a joy to be able to also bring this, a check for dividend back to the town of Vidalia, if this money can be spent back here. Uh, Louisiana Workers Compensation Corporation is a workers co, company that we use for, uh, the town of Vidalia. They are, they set the bar at, uh, being able to control expense and work with their clients to manage, uh, risk, expenses, et cetera. And they're able, because of they do, because of them being able to do that, be able to give back to their policy holders. And I have here in my hands a check for a hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars that we're gonna give back to the town of Vidalia.
Wow.
Yeah, good.
Pretty good.
And this is what, the second or third check that we've got?
It is.
I want y'all to stick around. I do wanna take some pictures, cause I think y'all deserve, you know, when we, when we looked at moving the workers comp, not only when we looked and got it away from the previous carrier, we were able to say not only almost a hundred thousand on the premium, it's got to dip in too, so.
Yes, sir.
You know, that was one of the cost-cutting things going on and on that we, that we done. And they also are handling all of our property cash and all that, so.
Yeah, and I'll just say this, every time that we have to work with, uh, the administrative offices here, no matter the carrier, no matter if it's LWCC or anything, these two right over here, they get excellent recognition from every carrier that we supply the town covered with. So, keep up the good work on that.
No doubt. Thank you guys so much, appreciate it. But stick around, we wanna get some pictures after this, so. Now, okay, we're getting there. Uh, I tell you what, I want to interject before we do that last thing. We'll go ahead and jump back up to our board discussion and vote on the approval of funding for the two thousand twenty-one summer youth program. I see Pastor Riley's here. Uh, now, Pastor, we brought this up and we moved, moved it in the agenda so you could get here, so. Uh, do you want to say anything about it? Does anybody have any questions on Mr. Riley about the program, or?
I think we have a couple of new board members since then. I mean, if they have any questions, that's fine. I mean, I know Mr. Betts yourself and Mr. Probst, you all know about the program, uh, excuse me.
Yeah, why don't you just explain it to Raymond, so we can.
Yeah, I will do that. Thank you, uh, Mayor Buzz Craft and other board, all of them, uh, everyone in the audience. Uh, I am Pastor Riley, uh, Pastor Graymont Coalition at Baptist Church, and I've had a very successful youth program in this city, twenty-eight years. And this program was designed, uh, twenty, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four years ago, twenty-two years ago, I'm wrong, my bad, to have a summer basketball program. But as the time went on, the basketball just faded away in the summer because the gyms were hot. So after that, I came to the, uh, previous administration and I asked them, could I still have the program? Just use it as a recreational evening program to keep the kids off the streets at night? I went to all of the administration, uh, police, the sheriff, police, the mayor, uh, and it, it went great. And then after that, we went to a recreation program. And so, a couple of years ago, I came before the city with the administration knew, because they didn't know anything, so I explained it to them, and I'm asking you all to do the same thing, to just, uh, extend us the possibility to continue to do this. It is very successful. Of course, I'm trying to save your honor, but I'm also trying to sell our kids to stay off the streets at night during the summer. It's a Monday through Thursday program. Friday, I mean, I owe the kids, all they just don't come out to a summer program. They, they, I don't know what they do on Friday, but they will not come to the gymnasium. And I do wanna say that myself, along with the Uppercord Parish School Board members, we have academies in every gym, so I'm pretty sure that our gyms are gonna be full this summer, because this is the first summer that we, uh, had academies in the gym. So I'm just asking you all to, uh, do this for us. Again, uh, this program is only costing the city a little over four thousand dollars. Uh, I have, uh, four employees that work in this program, and, I mean, it's, it's, oh, and see, I don't stop at eighteen. The recreational program that we have stops. When a kid graduate, they can't come to the gym and play basketball, football, uh, ping pong, whatever, at any gym in our parish that have recreation. So in the evening time, we control the age limit or whatever. Uh, I talk with Sheriff, uh, with, uh, not Sheriff, Chief Merrill, uh, we have policemen that ride around through, because I don't want these kids to think that we're policing them, so they ride through every thirty or forty minutes or whatever, just showing up. Uh, Brother Frank Doucet, he'll come in there and sit there and play ping pong, or, or cards, or whatever, or netball. We have a lot of games, basketball, ping pong, all kind of games and activities for the kids to do during the nighttime. Of course, we want them off the street, but if we're gonna keep them off the street. We're in a different society now, and I've learned, if you don't give them something to do, they will find something to do. So I'm asking the board to, uh, to approve this, uh, once again for us. Uh, those of you that don't know, also that the city, uh, I guess it's illegal for me to say this, that, uh, the city takes care of the program through, funded through our church, because our church, uh, puts the liability of insurance policy on this program. So if anything happens in there, it's on us and not anybody else.
I make a motion, we accept.
Motion made by Mr. Probst, I hear, second. Second by Ms. Dembie.
I got a question.
Okay, question, discussion?
Yeah, we, we voted on this last year. What happened during the summer with, since there was no, there was COVID and everything was shut down, what happened?
I came to Mr. Doucet and I asked him and, uh, Mayor Craft, we're not gonna be going to gym, could I still have the program? And what I did was, I'll never do it again. I promise you, as long as I'm black and living, I'll never do it again. I chose to cut elderly people yards, and I got questioned, why didn't you cut my yard? How come you're only picking these people to cut yards? And what I did was, I asked two people that worked with Council on Aiden to give me five people a piece. And that's how I picked the yards. I didn't pick them. And then, of course, I got all of these questioned, why didn't they cut my yard? How come they're only cutting these people's yards? And I, out of the goodness of myself. And I, out of goodness of myself, added a couple, but I'm fifty-nine years old, I can't do it anymore. So if, if the CDC says we can't go in the gym, I saw Mr. Duson, I was begging him, but he didn't come in, so if they're not gonna have the morning program that we have, I'm not gonna worry about the evening program, because evidently, the CDC won't allow us to do it. So if they, if the recreational program is approving the summer program that they normally have, then I ask that you allow us to do it.
And if you don't, you're just not gonna take the bond?
And if they're not, I'm not gonna do it, I won't even talk to them, I told Mr. Duson that same thing, I said, I would not do that.
Good question, John.
Thank you.
That was a good question.
Really don't mean nothing about this, but what keeps First Baptist from coming to us or the Catholic Church, saying, hey, y'all give this church money for summer program, what?
Then I give the church money now.
No, he just runs it through the church.
I just run the program through the church, so we have insurance. So if anything happens in the gym, uh, and this man right here keep peeking at me, he can let you know that when my church goes somewhere, we got a nice insurance policy that we'll take care of.
That was one of the questions we had last time, was who's responsible? And he put the insurance policy on, he's responsible. Their church is responsible, but it's not run as a church, it's run as a city summer program.
This is a good question?
I got that. Good question, that was a good question, but I'm saying that's what it, that question we brought up last time.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all right, motion made, second, uh, by Ms. Demby, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, the last thing on our agenda, and we have an announcement concerning our economic development. Uh, I wish I could tell y'all that this is gonna be, uh, good news, but this one's gonna hurt y'all. I'm gonna tell you, it's gonna hurt bad. Uh, so, I'll say some more in just a minute, but I'm gonna ask Heather if she would come up and, and address the council. She's got her sweet daughter with her.
I have my support group here. So, mayor's gonna let me give you the bad news. Um, so I wanted to come before the board, uh, I guess to give you my formal resignation. Um, I have taken a job with Longview Economic Development, um, and will be unfortunately leaving this wonderful town and community, um, mid to late June, depending on how we, you know, transition and progress. Um, so I wanted to be able to deliver the news to each of you face to face, and, um, let you know how much I've enjoyed being back home, um, and working with the administrations that I've worked with, um, and being able to do, um, what I'm passionate about for a community that has been so kind to me and my family. I, I feel like that, you know, in these almost thirteen years that I've been back home, that a lot has been accomplished. Um, we've laid a lot of groundwork, we've had some great successes. Um, we may not have always agreed on every single little thing, but I think that we've all been able to communicate well with each other, and, um, made decisions that we felt were best for Fidelia and our community and our region. And I truly feel comfortable knowing that I've, I'm leaving the community better than how I found it, and, um, have laid a great foundation to continue the work that we've started. And I know, um, with the transition, that I will definitely do everything I can to make sure the transition is smooth, um, because I do not wanna leave any of you, you know, in a bad situation. I'm preparing a transition document that will be provided, of course, to the town, Concordia Economic Development, Natchez Inc., um, where they will continue to carry out all of our responsibilities to make sure we don't miss a step until we are able to hire somebody to replace me. So thank you all for supporting me throughout these years, and, um, you know, I'll be back, because I'm from here, and I will always care about what happens here, and will always be available for questions. Or like I've told Amy, I love to give my opinion, so if you ever want my opinion, just give me a call, and I will provide it. Um, but thank you all.
Heather, I, you know, when Heather first came up here several weeks ago and told me that this was a possibility, she said, Mayor, I'm just gonna be transparent with you, you know, I, I did have someone contact me, and, uh, we're gonna look at it, and her sweet daughter's gonna be, we'll keep her in her prayers, that she's gonna be having surgeries, and this will, Longview's gonna be a lot closer to, uh, her doctors, and that, and that, this is an upward move for her as far as her career. And I said, I can't be mad at you. Uh, I said, anytime somebody improves their lives and, and do what's best for their family, we can't do nothing but give you love and support, and thanks for the job you have done. I, I, look, there is nobody sicker than I am, uh, that know what all you've done, and what you can do, and what you have done, and oh my goodness, it's just, we have some really, really big shoes that I don't think will be filled for a long time, but, uh, anyway, we wish you the best. Uh, if it doesn't work out, you know, but, uh, we're praying the best for you and Matt and your family and your sweet children, and, uh, again, uh, uh, Fidelia, this one's gonna hurt. I mean, to me, this was, uh, probably some of the worst news I've heard in a long, long time. But, anyway, when you lose someone who was, uh, you know, she's not only gonna be missed in Fidelia, but in Concordia Parish, in Natchez, at the area, but also the state of Louisiana. Heather's on the first, she sits on a lot of boards, uh, economic development boards in Baton Rouge, that she has her finger on the pulse of everything going on in the state, and her opinion and knowledge is well-respected throughout the state, and she's going to Texas. So, but anyway, no, thank you, Heather, and, uh, we hope to do something special for you, I'd like to give you another thank you so much for So, anyway, so, all right, that being known as the end of our agenda, do I hear a motion that we can adjourn? Motion by Mr. Probst, right here, second by Ms. Demby, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.